Yeah, we actually called an order on November 20th, 2025, for the Miami City Schools Board meeting. Please stand for quick.
Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For call, Mr. Wells. Mr. Ambler?
Here.
Mr. Dappler?
Here.
Mrs. Gettler?
Here.
Mr. Maury?
Present.
Mrs. Neese?
Here.
Ms. Chapman?
She's at a band concert tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Dudley?
Here.
Mr. Prince?
Here.
Ms. Stocker?
Here.
Mr. Homan?
Here.
Ms. Maney?
Here.
Mr. Wells is here.
Awesome. On to meeting opening items. Do I have a motion to approve opening items A through H?
I move to approve items A through H.
First by Mrs. Neese, second by Mrs. Gettler.
Mr. Ambler?
Oh, well, real quick.
Let's talk about that, let's talk about the items real quick.
Okay. Real quick, just out of curiosity, there was a couple of policy things that I was hoping we could discuss further as a board or workshop first week of December. I had alluded to that to Ms. Maney, and I believe to Mr. Dappler, and just so our board can discuss those, I was hoping we could table 1422, 3122, and 4122, and also table 142202, 312202, and 412202, then rescind those current policies, just leave the current policies in place until we can further discuss those.
I was unaware of anything. Jason, what, when did you notify, or what was the notification?
I reached out and said, mentioned it to Ms. Maney, and she suggested that I ask her for consideration. Table it right through this, so.
Were these the policies that we discussed in our morning meeting?
The policies we reviewed in our morning meeting that we went through the first and second reading pending over the last two months.
Correct.
Not all of them, just three of them. They grew from three pages to 14 pages, and I just think it'd be prudent to take a look at them and discuss why they grew 11 pages, and maybe discuss some other things to add within those to make them a little bit more thorough if they need to be that big at all.
Well, so we're on the second reading, we've had a few weeks to look at this, and we are bringing it up now. Do we have a workshop scheduled in December?
We do the, we scheduled a workshop for the fourth. Last year, first Thursday, or third Thursday, I thought.
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't done one of those. Have we done any of those? We haven't done any of those. I, I. I was fine with the first reading and our approval of the first reading and our going over it when we went over it with Norman.
Fair enough. I sent my comments to Regina, to Stacy, and to Greg earlier today. They can just stand as a matter of record. If anybody wants to take time to conduct any further oversight, I have to respect that. Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to C, the adoption of the.
I believe Greg has called the call.
We're going to go through every item, and then we're going to vote on it. Item C, adoption of the agenda, this was the approval of adoption of the agenda for this agenda. I don't know why we got a vote on that. We're going to go all the way to. Ann was first.
Mrs. Neese had the motion, and Mrs. Gettler had the second.
Yeah, we're not going to vote right now. We're going to get to item D, the waiting of the reading of the minutes. This is the regular board meeting that was held on Thursday, October 9th. E is approval of minutes, approval of the regular board meeting held on October 9th. F is the approval of financial reports. Mr. Wells, do you have anything here?
Yes, I just wanted to update the board. I had put in my treasurer's report that the, there was four items that were currently under consideration by the Senate. I had already gone through the House, House Bill 129, House Bill 186, House Bill 309, and House Bill 335, the likes of which I had affectionately referred to as the Four Horsemen of the Apocalypse. I just wanted to update my treasurer's report to note that that did indeed pass the Senate. There was a handful of amendments that were made, went to the House that evening for concurrence. They were all concurred, and they are going to the governor's desk for site, for signature. House Bill 129, it takes substitute levies like the one that we currently have in place, and includes them in the 20 mil floor, which ultimately can, it decrease the amount of inflation increases we can get over time from new construction. That will have an impact on our forecast. House Bill 186 is probably of the four is the worst. It actually will dial back inflation on real estate taxes, which, again, not necessarily any of us would disapprove of, unfortunately, in fiscal or tax year 23, collected in '24, we, the district received a 15% increase in our real estate taxes in aggregate, and this would dial that back to 5.4%. So between House Bill 129 and House Bill 186, you're looking at a $3.1 million per year decrease in our real estate taxes. Fiscal year 27, that would be only half of a year that we would have, because, again, these are tax years and calendar years are the same, so for a fiscal year, we would see, we would feel half of the increase in fiscal year 27, and we would feel a full increase in fiscal years 28 and 29, which are on the current forecast. And because of that, then, it will change our, our carryover to be into negative territory in fiscal '29 instead of fiscal '30. So, again, these are, right now, these are just kind of quick and dirty estimates based on the legislative folks that do the scoring on these things. House Bill, just for the record, House Bill 309 is, is going to give the county budget commission authority to be able to dial back any collection of taxes that they feel unnecessary. Obviously, for us being in deficit spending, that should not be a risk. I would hope they wouldn't dial this back further, but there's always a risk because they are empowered to do that if they deem it so unnecessary. House Bill 335, limits inside millage revenue increases, thankfully by us reducing our inflation assumptions in the October forecast, the impact of that is pretty minimal. So, again, House Bill 186 and House Bill 129 do, however, result in a $3.1 million decrease of revenues, which then accelerates our deficit spending.
You mentioned just a minute ago that that was a reduction in, in, I don't think you described those as a reduction in inflation or a reduction in what we can refer to.
Yeah, so, so what it does is it caps inflation on real estate. So, so, for instance, in, in, next year, in calendar year 2026, there is a revaluation that is scheduled to happen in a third of the counties across the state, including Montgomery. So, if the, if the auditor, if the county auditor goes to everyone's houses in the districts, in the district, and decides that we are, our, our real estate values have gone up, let's just say 10%, we'll make it a nice, easy number. But the GDP deflator, basically, it's another measurement of, 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 of national inflation is only 3%, then we would only incur a 3% increase in, in our taxes.
With the, what you were talking about before, you just talked about the inflation. Has there been any from the state that helped?
Yes, so, so initially, there would be, so that's what I said, in fiscal '27, there will actually be, they are going to cancel the sales tax holiday, which I think most of us probably enjoy, especially for, for those of you that have children in, in school, you know, you get the sales tax holiday, you know, when you go out and buy new school clothes, supplies, whatever, you get the sales tax holiday in August. That will be canceled in next August in order to fund a relief package that will go to schools to help curb that dial back, that, that setback that they're doing retroactively for two years. So for us, we receive, like I said, we had our, we had our updates, our tax, or our evaluation updates in, in tax year '23, collected in calendar year '24. That was, again, about a 15% increase, and that will get dialed back to, to 5.4%. And so we will get a one-year stipend, I guess is the best way to describe it, that will come from the cancellation of the August 2026 sales tax holiday. Again, it probably won't be one to one, it all depends on whatever they would normally collect, and that still would be calculated. But we will get some relief from that, and from that point forward, then, it's right now, it's, based on the simulations coming out of the state, it would be a $3.1 million per fiscal year impact, negative impact to the district.
Thanks for doing my legislative report.
Sorry.
No, I appreciate it.
I didn't mean to scare your thunder.
You did a much better, no, you did a much better job than I could have. I did have one question that I was going to ask you during that, though I asked you now, since it's relevant to the commentary. So, when I read through this legislation, it talks about taking, the purpose of the emergency substitute levy was the fact that it exposes to be able to collect more millage beyond the 20 mil floor. And when I add, when I add the two levies that Myhamsburg was receiving, they come up to 22 and 1/2 mils. Does that mean now that this emergency substitute levy, that was a continuing levy, because it had been renewed so many times, does that mean that we're going to lose 2 and 1/2 mils funding because of that legislation?
The, the continuing substitute levy was subject to effective millage. So initially, that was, I think it was initially passed, I'd have to go back and look at my notes, but initially, it was passed at 14, 14.76 mils, if I recall. And, and, and so, and that collected $14 million per year when it was passed. It still continues to collect, it collects $14 million, plus a little bit of growth on top of that. Of course, then you've also got depreciation, for example, what we see at the, the old Dayton Mall properties where those, they, they're distressed, and so they're, they're going to the Board of Tax and, and getting their, their values reduced. Bottom line, it still produces $14 million a year, a little, a smidge more than that, and the millage is down to 11.26. Again, when we, we start talking about millage, I apologize, you know, when I was, when I was just, you know, a, a citizen that sat in the crowd and they would start talking millage, my eyes would roll back in my head. Still does the same degree. Bottom line is it generates, it will continue to generate $14 million a year. However, it will be, it will be in our 20 mil floor, so we're not going to see growth there. Right now, we see growth on the 20 mils. We won't see growth for a while on the 20 mils until the effective millage dials all the way back to 20 mils again.
So we, we would have to have enough growth to lose 2.5 mils or go below that in order to collect more money from those revenue sources?
As valuations go up, the millage dials back, we will continue to collect at the same amount, minus 129 and 186. Again, you know, you, you know, you almost, it's like keeping score for a baseball game at this point. It's, it gets a little convoluted.
I've been here for two years, and I'm just starting to understand.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's challenging.
So basically, in the sense, 2020, with that substitute levy became ongoing, all the growth in our area as a whole has only dropped that like 0.4?
No, actually, it went from 14 something down to 11.26, I believe, or.
Got it, so it was 14, so it's come down several.
Yes, and so, so it, it still collects the $14 million where it was initially set. And the best, and the, the, the advantage to a continuing or just a substitute levy period is the fact that any additional growth in your community, so if, if somebody builds a brand-new house across the street from you, or if somebody builds a new business across the street from President Dappler, that adds incremental income to the district. So basically, it helps to fight, it helps to fend off inflation. So we see growth from the substitute levy, because any new additional housing then adds to that. And it, all it does is they get taxed at the same level that everybody else is being taxed at, so the number of mils.
And just for the community, just so they understand this, because it took me a minute to understand it, that was the beauty of the substitute emergency levy.
It wasn't emergency levy previously.
Your revenue grew as the community grew. The flaw of that is it was called an emergency, and it was just a vehicle that allowed us to have our millage increase as the growth, with the growth of the community.
Yes, the terminology of an emergency levy.
For two years.
Yeah, the terminology of an emergency levy, it actually stemmed from legislation back in the '70s when the country was in recession and school districts desperately needed emergency levies, emergency operating levies to be able to keep the doors open. Well, that legislation continued on for, you know, the next several decades, and they never changed the wording on it. So even though, you know, we'd say, well, what's the emergency? Well, it's not really an emergency unless it doesn't pass or it doesn't get renewed, then it's an emergency. Well, over time, then, thankfully, back in 2022, the, the community of Myhamsburg was, was generous to the school district, and, and, and we were able to convert that to a continuing substitute. Under the emergency levy, it was effective millage. So it would constantly dial back every year to only collect a fixed dollar amount. Well, with the substitute, by, by, by turning it or converting it into a substitute levy, it was able to give us some growth, so when a new housing addition goes up, those extra rooftops then would generate some additional revenue to help offset the additional increase in, in, in student population that we would see from those, now, every, every rooftop, statistically speaking, across the state of Ohio equals 2.2 kids. So when a new roof pop, pops up, there's two more kids we have to educate. By the continuing substitute, you're able to have additional growth, so you can help to pay for the additional education of those children.
So the financial impact, without having to look at your forecast again and go through that, if we take your forecast at deficit levels that we went over last month, or whenever you proposed that, we need to add $3.5 million to each of those deficit forecasts for every year after this year?
It'll be $1.5 million in fiscal '27, and then $3.1 million in '28 and '29. And by the end of fiscal '29, I'm projecting that we would be, we would be in a negative cash situation by the end of the year.
And so that is in addition to the numbers that.
That, that's, that's worse than what we, because before, the, the forecast that we discussed last month, we wouldn't be into a negative cash situation until fiscal '30.
So it accelerates that a year, year and a half?
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just had a quick question. What percentage of our budget is our cash balance right now?
Uh, I don't know, I would have to calculate that, and I'm not quite sure. I'm not quite sure. I mean, my 35%, 40%, somewhere near that.
Is our cash balance still around 23 million?
Uh, yes, it is, it's right around 20, 24 million, I believe. Just haven't done payroll yet at the end of the month. I'm sorry, any other questions? I want to make a general comment, just to make sure, I mean, all that sounds, you know, horrific, and none of it really does sound good, but it's not like we're, should be running around here with our hair on fire trying to make major decisions. We need to be efficient and do what we have been doing in the past, and just trying to save some of these, save where we can, and dial back where we can, and, and try to combat the best, the best we can in these coming years. And, as we know, we never know what the legislature is going to do, and they always seem to change their mind and direction on how schools get their money. So, I mean, we have this conversation today, it always seems to change in two years on which way we're going. I just, it just seems to be that way. That's at least in my four years being here, so. And, and I think you bring up a good point. I mean, right now, thankfully, the district does have, we do have a cash balance. And, and if, all this legislation that I just described is not going to impact fiscal year '26, fiscal year that we're in currently. So, no, we are not in panic mode by any stretch of the imagination. We have time to take corrective action. Again, we can't continue to absorb those types of deficits for perpetuity, but we don't have to, you know, pull the fire alarm either, so. Yeah, you hear those numbers, and people can get worried.
Quit it out of shape.
Yeah, so, just kind of want to make it.
What is the deficit forecasted for '26 for this year?
3.9 million for the year.
3.9 million? So our cash balance is going to get down 3.9 million this year. What's it forecasted next year?
Give me one more, please. So, yes, we are projecting to have ending cash balance at the end of fiscal '26 of 24.3 million. Now, with the, with this legislation, assuming that the governor signs it and/or vetoes and gets overridden, which either one is probably a pretty good possibility, we would be down to 18.15 in, at the end of fiscal '27. At the end of fiscal '28, we would be down to 9.2. And as I said, in, in fiscal '29, we would, again, assuming nothing else changed, we would be $2.4 million upside down, negative cash balance. Which, by the way, the state would not allow. So, we're one forecast away from actually hitting the radar at the state. So they, they will not allow us. And once we get into fiscal '27 and we show negative cash balance at the end of '29, they will require us to have corrective action, a corrective action plan.
In the meantime, we're planning, we're going to make, we're going to make some actions.
Yes, yeah, I mean, Superintendent Maney, Assistant Superintendent Homan, all of the cabinet members, the principals, we've actually, we've had conversations with our principals, we've had a conversation with our, our teachers' union. Again, I presented the five-year forecast to them. This is obviously new information that I'm presenting tonight with the passage of the Four, the Four Horsemen. Everybody's aware, and then, so we know that there's, there's some decisions that we're going to have to take into account. There's lots of ways to, to skin that cat, you know, the, there's, there's attrition, there's opportunities to increase or enhance revenues, there's ways to decrease expenses. There's, there's a lot of options that we have at our disposal, and we're going to take all of those tools out of the toolbox and look at them, and then come back with a plan that we're going to recommend to the board, and then at that point, you guys can decide which of those things you want to, we have an appetite for, which ones you do not. And ultimately, where we go to, if we end up having to go to the community and ask for additional funds to be able to maintain services at a certain level, and we'll see where it goes.
I had some ideas that I'll, I'll wait later in the meeting during their financial to discuss. One thing I would cover, so when I hear the 30-day minimum required cash balance, is that 30% of your annual cost of doing business? So like, for instance, I mean, we do, we're between 65 and 70 million a year. Does that mean we need to have a cash reserve of 19.5 million? What is that, what is that 30-day operating?
30 days would be 1/12 of, of our, of our budget, so.
I'm sorry, three months?
Yes, three, well, yes, if it was three months, then basically, you're looking at 25% of your, of your budget. So, uh, so we're what, $66 million of, of revenue forecasted for this year? So we would need 25% of that.
And if we don't have that, what does that mean? Because it sounds like this isn't a real, true big deal until that number to forecast to go negative.
The, it certainly by, if we have a, and forgive me, I'm not sure if we have a board policy in place for, for minimum carryover balance. Generally speaking, again, you look at that from a business perspective. You know, no business operates without operating capital. So we need money in the bank, if, again, we just, all of us just, you know, you, you, we know about the, the federal shutdown, right? So what happens if something happens at the state level and we can't get our payments from the state? We better have money in the bank to be able to make payroll, to be able to keep the lights on, to be able to keep the water flowing. So, again, from an operating capital perspective, we definitely, at minimum, we would have to have whatever the board policy is. Treasurer Greg would say that it probably should be somewhere in the neighborhood of 90 to 120 days to make him feel a little more comfortable. But, uh, again, it's, it's necessary to always have money in the bank for operating capital, so that way we can maintain our commitments, not only for, for human resources, because, again, that's, that's 85% of our budget, but certainly for all of the, the other expenses that we have from an operating perspective.
So if I look at this from a numbers perspective, the adjustments, so if we go from 24.3 million in fiscal year '26 to 18.15 in fiscal year '27, the goal would be to not deficit spend going into '28. Is that correct?
Correct.
Got it, thank you.
I hate to beat this dead horse, but when you told me that we're going to be at 24 and 27, 24 million and 27, and before that, you said they're only going to give you half, they're, you're not, they're not going to take the full 15% away, and '27, you take 24 to 18, I'm, I'm not gathering that 6 million loss. Should only be three. So I'm not understanding where you're getting the 6 million in '27. But I think there's a lot of numbers being said, and there, there was, there's an additional $4.7 million loss already booked for.
Projected.
Projected, yes, correct, that's not a good word, thank you. Projected for fiscal '27. So 1.5 million on top of that is where you get the $6 million.
Got you.
That's where, that's where I was confused, too. Because the change was added to the already forecasted deficit that we had last month.
Correct, yes, we are, we are currently forecasting a, a, a carryover of a little over 19.6, and then with the 1.5 million dollar decrease due to the, the House Bill 129 and House Bill 186 legislation, and ultimately, it would result in a carryover of 18.15. Again, that's just, right now, these, literally, these change daily. There's probably an email in my inbox right now that changes what this is. I have, again, it's a moving target, but at least directionally, it's not good.
They changed four the last two days, they changed a lot.
It has changed a lot, yes, yes, indeed, so, thank you. Okay, now, we will move on to some exciting stuff. We are going to recognize retirees, and it's my honor to read this, as I had him as a teacher and a coach, I believe, at some point, and he's become a great friend. So, a resolution of appreciation, whereas Jason Osborne has rendered 32-year service to the Myersburg City Schools, and whereas Jason Osborne's performance, conduct, and sincerity in carrying out his duty has exemplified the highest level of achievement, and whereas Jason Osborne has distinguished himself as a teacher, coach, and track and field site man, of, coach of football and track and field, site manager, assistant athletic director, and athletic director in the Myersburg City School District. Therefore, be it resolved that the Myersburg City School Board of Education passes this resolution as a token of its appreciation for his outstanding conduct, and that such resolution become part of the permanent board minutes of said board of education November 20th, 2025. Thank you, Mr. Osborne.
Say any words of wisdom?
Phil's about to remind me, make Cory put his nose in this.
I won't tell any stories, but I just appreciate it, you know, being from Myhamsburg, my hometown guy, able to, you know, spend my whole career here. my hometown guy, able to, you know, spend my whole career here, at the place that I, you know, wanted to be and love to be, able to raise my family here, a wonderful wife that's here tonight. And so, yeah, don't have much prepared to say, but just thank you to everyone, everyone for giving me the opportunity to be, doing what I love in the place that I love for thirty-two years. So I've been very blessed. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
I went to school to tell them.
How about one just Jason?
I really have appreciated all our talks and all of your guidance as to what needs to happen.
As my retirement gave to you, I would say, you don't have to stay here for the whole time. Okay, so we will move on to even more fun stuff, and we will have the district student of the month.
Yep.
Come on up here.
Hello, buddy. How we doing?
The October student district of the month is Damian Anderson from Maddox Lane Preschool. Damian was chosen to be the October student of the month because he follows the PPI's expectation to be kind every day. Damian is kind to all of his friends in our classroom, being very welcoming, always saying hi to his teachers and friends and greetings, those who arrive at school after him. He is a leader in our classroom, following our routine and rules and setting a good example for his peers. Damian helps his friends with our routine, as well as participates in our daily activities and encouraging them to participate as well, saying phrases like, "Come on, let's dance." Damian has made friends with lots of students in our classroom and makes sure to include his friends while playing in the classroom and outside on the playground. He wants them to play games with each other and sit by one another while sitting on the carpet. He is a hard worker and has a positive attitude every day at school. He helps to make our classroom a welcoming and happy place for all of his friends. Damian is a big helper to his friends and his teacher, always being the first to offer to do something that will support his peers in the classroom environment. Every day, Damian comes to school with a smile, excitement, and kindness. Thank you very much, and congratulations.
She even has it wrote down here and highlighted for me, and I just skipped over it. Okay, so we're going to go back to item C real quick and adopt the agenda. Do I have a motion?
You already had Niece and Getter.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Ambler?
Yes.
Mr. Dappel?
Yes.
Mrs. Getter?
Yes.
Mr. Maury?
Yes.
And Mr. Niece. Mrs. Niece, I'm sorry about that. I just read what's on the paper.
So we've already, uh, do we?
Item I, please.
Okay, do I have approval of meeting opening items A through H?
Second.
I'm sorry, you had the second. First by Mr. Ambler, second by Mrs. Getter. Roll call.
Mr. Ambler?
Yes.
Mr. Dappel?
Yes.
Mrs. Getter?
Yes.
Mr. Maury?
Yes.
And Mrs. Niece?
Yes.
All right, we're rolling on through here to public comments. Each person who wishes to address the board shall complete this form prior to the beginning of the meeting. Commenters will be given his or her, will give his or her name and address. Each person is allowed a three minutes to speak, the first fifteen minutes only of public participation will be allotted for public comment concerning agenda items, and additional fifteen minutes for discussion on other topics. Will provide a total of thirty minutes for the public comments. We will give a thirty-second warning so speakers know when their three minutes is up. During public participat, uh, participation, each member of the public should direct their comments to the board as a whole, consistent with our policy. This is not the time to question individual board members or district employees. As a reminder, our expectation tonight is that everybody conduct themselves civilly, respectfully. We will not tolerate profanity, frivolous, repetitive, or harassing statements. Mr. Homan, you have, you have the three-minute clock. Greg will take the thirty-minute clock. Mr. Homan will give the thirty-second warning, and we will start public comments with Adam Smith.
Good evening, Board. My name is Adam Smith. I live at one zero three three one Spring Point Circle, apartment I. My name is Adam Smith. I'm here tonight because recent events in our district has raised serious concerns about board conduct, impartiality, and the treatment of educators and community members. First, I want to address the public post made by a board member in which they refer to racial equity and LGBTQ policies as evil. Comments like this contradict the board's oath to serve all students impartially and undermine trust in this district, especially among families who rely on these policies for safety and support. I've also learned this board member's association with political groups, association with the Seventeen Seventy-Six Project PAC, and with individuals who helped escalate recent controversies involving district educators. From the information available, it appears the controversy was amplified by a member of this board, not by educators themselves. For that reason, I respectfully ask for the board to reconsider the disciplinary actions taken against Rachel O'Connor and Steve Aylward. Since raising these concerns, something even more troubling has occurred. After I emailed the board privately, my personal message and cell phone number were shared without my consent. Was a community member known for disruptive behavior and discriminatory content, uh, comments. This individual then contacted and pressured me for information. I later confirmed his identity through a reverse lookup and immediately blocked him. This breach of confidentiality is unacceptable. It is unethical, potentially unlawful, and it creates a chilling effect for anyone who may want to bring concerns to this board. No resident should fear that contacting their school district could result in their private information being handed to someone with a known history of harassment. Taken together, divisive public comments, political entanglements influencing district matters, and the unauthorized release of citizens' personal information, these actions deeply damage community trust. I urge the board to address this breach, to review the disciplinary actions taken, and to recommit to ethical, impartial leadership. Our community is watching, and these concerns will not simply fade away. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Randy Reed.
My name is Randy Reed, and I'm a resident of Myersburg. I want to begin with a clear ask. This board should reverse the suspensions of music teacher and band director Steve Aylward and social studies teacher Rachel O'Connor, restore their professional records, and publicly disclose the legal costs associated with this entire situation. Let me explain why. They made brief comments which never supported violence that should have been handled internally and proportionally. Instead, their comments were split into a national political outrage cycle. Political organizations and PACs like Turning Point USA, Seventeen Seventy-Six Project, used the death of Charlie Kerr to launch broad attacks on educators all across the country. And Myersburg was pulled directly into that political machine. What should have been a local, personal matter suddenly became a part of a national culture war campaign. Making the situation even worse, a board member publicly echoed and engaged with the same narratives those outside groups were pushing. On his social media, he criticized the teachers involved and amplified the online hostility surrounding them. When an elected board member feeds a national outrage campaign targeting our own educators, doesn't protect this district, it increases the pressure and deepens the harm. After the disciplinary agreement was announced, I spoke directly with Superintendent Maney. She told me she was unaware of this online activity from a board member, and that it was never brought into board discussions or negotiations. She also shared that the offer, which the teachers eventually accepted, had been on the table for about a month. Considering the national political pressure and the inflammatory online environment, including commentary from a sitting board member, it's completely reasonable these teachers hesitated. Across the country, school boards have recognized when teachers were caught in politically motivated complaints and have chosen to reverse disciplinary actions. Myersburg should do the same. So again, my ask is simple and necessary. Reverse the suspensions, restore these teachers' names, tell taxpayers what this politically motivated chaos costs us, and let us learn a lesson and not waste any more money. Our educators should not be collateral, collateral damage in national political battles. I urge the board to correct course.
Thank you. Next, we have Gina.
Vedanto.
Thank you. I didn't want to butcher that, but you have me not.
I'm used to it. Good evening. My name is Janice Vedanto. I live at ten six hundred Dayton, Cincinnati Pike. I'm here tonight to ask the board to review board member conduct. Reaffirm the district's commitment to serve and protect all students and consider a formal censure of a specific board member. This board member's repeated public attacks are unacceptable and legally concerning. On October fifteenth, this board member posted publicly on Facebook that transgender LGBTQ plus policies and racial equity were essentially evil. This statement was, at the time, visible to families, staff, and students. By labeling inclusion and equity as evil, Mr. Maury creates a hostile discriminatory environment.
Ma'am, we're going to direct the board as a whole and not as individuals, please.
Yeah, I, I wrote it.
It's okay, let her, let her.
It conflicts with his oath to uphold the U.S. and Ohio constitutions, the district's non-discrimination policies, and federal civil rights protections. This behavior is part of a broader pattern. During the school board election season, I was actually personally doxxed by this board member, ma, being made false claims about, and also having anti-LGBTQ positions voiced again. These actions also triggered threats from others in the community. This is not about me personally, though. It demonstrates, however, that he uses his platform to intimidate and misrepresent, showing a lack of professionalism and judgment that endangers students, families, teachers, and the district as a whole. His conduct extends far beyond that. He has publicly maligned teachers, accused them of pushing ideology, of lacking common sense, of supporting inclusion, equity, or even teaching the approved curriculum. He has also publicly disparaged fellow board members, undermining professional relationships and destabilizing board governments. This is what's at stake. Twenty-six percent of Myersburg students are not white. Roughly fifteen percent nationally consider themselves LGBTQ at the high school level. So that's around fifteen hundred students, probably in our district, that are being affected and labeled as evil by a board member who swore an oath to protect them. This is not just unethical, it's legally significant. Public attacks like this violate Title VI, Title IX, and the Equal Protection Clause, exposing districts to lawsuits, federal investigations, and financial risk. I have submitted a detailed letter to all of you, and what I shared tonight is only a small portion of these infractions. I ask you to review his conduct to publicly reaffirm to Myersburg citizens that you respect every student and to consider a formal censure to protect the district. Thank you.
Next, we have Allison Chutesy. Chutesy.
Good evening. My name is Allison Chutesy, and I'm the homeowner at sixteen thirteen Sioux Avenue. I'm here tonight to speak about the urgent need to protect our LGBTQ plus students and hold board members accountable when their words put those students at risk. Nationwide, LGBTQ youth face alarming mental health challenges. According to the CDC, sixty-five of LGBTQ students report persistent feelings of sadness and hopelessness, and forty-one percent have seriously considered suicide, far higher than their heterosexual peers. Transgender and questioning students are at an even greater risk, with over a quarter reporting suicide attempts in the past year. These are not abstract statistics. They represent the students sitting in our classrooms struggling to feel safe and accepted. Research shows supportive school environments, affirming educators, access to trained counselors, and opportunities for students to connect in supportive spaces or clubs dramatically improve mental health outcomes. Feeling connected to caring adults at school is one of the strongest protective factors we can provide. But the safety is threatened when a board member publicly spreads misinformation and hat, and hatred. A board member has labeled LGBTQ inclusion as both evil and immoral. Board member has claimed that pride symbols and affirming policies are projecting adult sexual preferences onto children. The board member's misleading statements about the district educators and counselors create an environment of fear and only cause harm. They do not help raise student achievement, safety, or wellness. This is not harmless speech, it's public hate. It stigmatizes students, undermines their mental health, and makes schools less, less safe for everyone. The district must act. We need clear public affirmation that every student, including LGBTQ youth, is valued, safe, and protected. Accountability for harmful rhetoric and concluding a review of the board member's statements, social media activity, and formal action if they violate board ethics or district policies. Teacher and staff training on LGBTQ inclusive practices and how to intervene in harassment. Words have power, and inaction has consequences. An example of such and a result of this board member's hate include me pulling my lesbian daughter and my younger son from this district until said board member is off the board. Now, there are other, along with this comes the removal of mine and my family's donations, volunteer service, supportive levies, and even things small as my Kroger report points from the district I love and wanted my children to be in and the community that I live in to now support the new school. I'm not the only person making this decision. The district must make clear that hate, intimidation, and fear mongering from a board member will not be tolerated. Our LGBTQ students deserve safe, affirming schools and leadership that protects them, not harms them.
Next, we have Laura Hopel. I had two for you, Ms. Hopel. Did you get it on online or?
Just once. My name is Laura Hopel. I live at twelve oh one Hollybrook Drive, and I've lived in Myersburg for the majority of my life. And I have two children that are currently in the school district. And we are at a critical moment for our city schools. Our district serves almost five thousand students, and around half come from low income households, including my own. Families are facing rising rents, higher grocery bills, and increasing pressure just trying to meet basic. trying to meet basic needs. In times like these, negative narratives about property taxes pushed not only by some community members but also by members of the business community can sound quite convincing. People are exhausted, overwhelmed, and scared. This type of fear is easy to manipulate. But this board has an opportunity to refrain, reframe this conversation. A strong public school system is not a burden to our community, it's a blessing, an essential piece and one of the most important drivers of stable property values, thriving local businesses, and long-term economic growth. Our district is growing, and we can see this all over the city by all of these developments that are popping up. And whether these new homes attract supportive, engaged, and diverse families depends on how we present our schools. At the same time, we cannot ignore the pressures facing public education, not just in our area but across the state, finding, funding uncertainty, voucher expansion, and worsening teacher shortages. And especially harmful to our community is the impact of a loud minority spreading, excuse me, spreading divisive rhetoric. Those voices were heard loudly during the recent election. Teachers heard them. Marginalized families heard them. Our children, who deserve to be safe and welcome while practicing their right to a free public education, heard them. Many are waiting to see if this district will stand firmly for inclusion, stability, and a focus on real student achievement. Our district is currently at a mid-level ranking. The real work of raising achievement requires strong leadership and strong educators, but that alone is not enough. It also requires a strong rapport with the community, one built on trust, transparency, and a shared purpose. Breaching that goal requires a clear unified vision, a vision that does not pull us into ideological battles, one that does not create fear among our educators, and one that does not lead to unnecessary staff suspensions that make it harder to recruit and retain the high-quality teachers that our students deserve. Instead, our vision must center on research-based best practices, on consistent support for staff and students, on a positive unified message about who we are and what we value. When the district frames the messaging and vision, not the loudest critics, families can feel safe, teachers feel supported, and the entire community benefits. I urge the board to move toward this vision: A welcoming, inclusive, academically strong district that attracts families, strengthens our economy, and stands as a foundation. Thank you.
All right, that is the last green sheet I got. We're going to move on to item four, which is adoption/revision of board policy. Do I have a motion to approve the Neola Board Policy 44.1 follow-up date?
I move to approve the follow-up date.
First by Mrs. Neese.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ampler. Roll call.
Mr. Ampler? Yes. Mr. Dappler?
Yep.
Mrs. Gettner?
Yes.
Mr. Maury?
No.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
We're going to move on to constituent agenda items. Do I have a motion to approve constituent agenda items A through G?
Sub move.
Second.
First by Mr. Maury, second by Mr. Ampler. We will start from the top. Item A, approval of not extended student stay. This looks like a trick for cross-country. Item B, and there is, what is that, that's Ohio State Championship? I guess that's still all the, that is for the cross-country there, just cut off on the next page. B is the same thing. C is approval of class of 2026 early graduates. Approval of class of, approval of class of 2026 graduates. Item D. E is a presentation and acceptance of consolidating school report nutrition service compliance report. I think this is all business as usual stuff. F is approval of recognition of organization/club. G is approval of memorandum of understanding between Myersbrook City School District and the Teamsters Union 957.
Organizational club, is that new or is that?
Looks like a new films club, is that what it is?
Ways and Means Club?
Ways and Means Film Club.
It's the Ways and Means statement that each club has to fill out in this new film club. They will, they will not be, there's no ways or means actually. It's a volunteer staff member that will be leading the group, advising the group, and then they will spend their own money to go to films and then discuss them.
That's why I said no dollars on that.
Correct.
So we're just approving it?
Yes, we have to approve it for liability's sake because they will be using our facilities to have meetings.
Do we need to approve the Ways and Means for boiler repair?
Shock absorbers.
Working through it.
Okay. G is the memorandum and understanding between Myersbrook City School District and Teamsters Union 957. Anybody want to speak to this?
I can. This is a severance payout for an employee that has been with us. She actually retired as a teacher in Miami'sburg and then came back on board and has been with us for an additional 25 years after post-retirement, her second career with us. And so this is a severance payout, and it encompasses an agreement between us and the Teamsters to pay others this year and next year that are in that same situation.
Thank you. Next, we have roll call.
Mr. Ampler? Yes. Mr. Dappler?
Yes.
Mrs. Gettner?
Yes.
Mr. Maury?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Next, we're going to move on to human resources. Item A, do I have approval to, motion to approve personnel reports certificated?
Sub move.
First by Mr. Maury.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ampler. Roll call.
Mr. Ampler? Yes. Mr. Dappler?
Yes.
Mrs. Gettner?
Yes.
Mr. Maury?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes, that hasn't changed since yesterday, right?
Nope.
Okay. Yes.
Item B, do I have a motion to approve for the approval of personnel reports classified?
I move for the approval of personnel reports classified.
I second it.
First by Mr. Ampler, second by Mrs. Neese. Roll call.
Mr. Ampler? Yes. Mr. Dappler?
Yes.
Mrs. Gettner?
Yes.
Mr. Maury?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Next, we have. Item C, do I have a motion to approve personnel reports certificated, classified, supplemental, and stipend?
Sub move.
I second it.
First by Mr. Maury, second by Mrs. Neese. Roll call.
Mr. Ampler? Yes. Mr. Dappler?
Yes.
Mrs. Gettner?
Yes.
Mr. Maury?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Okay, next, we have item D. Do I have a motion to approve the revision of administrative salary schedule?
I move for the revision of the administrator's salary schedule.
First by Mrs. Neese. I second. Second by Mr. Dappler. Roll call.
How is the administrative salary schedule revised?
I'll give you, I'll give you an update. It is just the addition of the word in Level 5B. No dollar amounts are affected. We have Level 5B as assistant supervisor. We're adding the word coordinator. There are some current staff members on this salary schedule already that it's more appropriate that their duties and job duties fall under a coordinator and less of a supervisor. And there may be subsequent employees that would more appropriately be considered a coordinator and their job descriptions would describe as such their job duties.
Just to re-classify.
It's an addition, yeah, it's an addition of the word coordinator. So the title coordinator would have the same pay as the title of assistant supervisor. Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Roll call.
Mr. Ampler? Yes. Mr. Dappler?
Yes.
Mrs. Gettner?
Yes.
Mr. Maury?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Okay, next, we will move on to agreements and contracts. Do I have a motion to approve agreements and contracts A through B?
I move for the agreement and contracts Alfa and Brava.
Second.
First by Mr. Ampler, second by Mrs. Gettner.
I just want to thank the city of Miami'sburg for leasing us their water tower for free for our telecommunications use. That's generous of them.
Yep.
I never realized that had its arrangement. Is that just the legitimate permission to put them on the water tower?
Yeah, they, they've always been good partners with us. That's where both our radios we use within the buildings that respond to the county and then also our transportation radios. They let us house them up there and.
Is that inadequate at all? Is the system with cellular technology or is it necessary?
No, the handheld radios that we use in, in the district that we use with safety grant money, those are, those are the newest technology. Eventually, we will have to replace, UHF is still in our buses, so that's something that we'll be building into the capital plant to replace those eventually, so. But it's a great location. And we got the repeaters up there and it works very fortunate.
I remember you looked on top of it to our review disintended.
Next, we have approval of applied behavioral services. Katie, I'm guessing this is in your department?
Yeah, it's a contract that's already in that location, so we just decided that it was best to maintain them there.
Perfect. Roll call.
Mr. Ampler? Yes. Mr. Dappler?
Yes.
Mrs. Gettner?
Yes.
Mr. Maury?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Next, we are going to move on to financial agenda items. Do I have a motion to approve item D receivable?
Sub move.
I second it.
First by Mr. Maury, second by Mrs. Neese. Great. Take it away.
So, again, the, every year, we have to notify the county if we wish to ask for advances. Again, the sooner, by taking advances, we can get our money from the county faster, which ultimately means we can invest it faster and maximize our interest earnings. The other one, we had a, thankfully, this is the first time in my career I've actually ever had a bond drop off, and we actually had residual revenues off of that bond. And ultimately, the, by law, by a high revised code, we can reuse those funds for PI. We just have to have a board resolution that has a two-thirds majority, and then we submit it to the county budget commission for approval. And once they have that, then I am authorized to make the transfer from the OO2 debt service account to an OO3 PI account, permanent improvement account.
Which bond was that?
It was the 2016B. Do you remember what the?
It doesn't even show up on the 2025 tax breakdown, does it?
It, it will not because it, it expired. We, we made the last payment in December of 2024.
How many mills was it?
That, I would have to look up. I'm sorry, I don't know. Yes, that was the 1997 issue, which was one of the elementary schools, I believe.
So just out of curiosity, if the bond was to pay for Medlarview, and it generated a specific amount of millage to pay for Medlarview, and it's retired, why wouldn't we leave it retired and lower people's taxes since the debt's been paid?
These monies were already collected. They were collected as part of that bond. So when, when you do these, you know, 30-year bonds, ultimately, the, the rates that you get, and I did, again, because I had never seen this actually happen, talking with our bond council, it's, it's quite common. Again, that's why ORC makes accommodations for it, that it's typically, there are residual revenues. And again, in many cases, it can be, depending on the size of the bond, it can be smaller or lower, but that's where these.
So we're not asking for permission to continue to collect the money?
No, no, we, we have not.
To retain the extra money that we took beyond what we owe?
Correct. We, we have not collected any monies since tax year '24.
Mr. Wells, could you please share the amount of that transfer? How much would that be?
It was, it was 600 and 7,000 and... That's why it says in an amount, in an about 600, 7,000. So it was.
Approximately that amount?
Correct. It's like 600, 7,392 dollars.
I just want the public to be aware of how much that was.
Yes, it's 600, it's just a little over 600, 7,000 dollars.
Thank you.
Is it typical for us to reclaim the amount more than we took for the bond since it was for the purpose of a loan instead of returning it to the taxpayer?
As I understand it, yes. Again, when you look at the fluctuation of rates and payments and everything else over time, I guess this is a fairly common, again, I've never seen, I've never seen bonds paid off. I've never been that fortunate. But talking bond council, they said that this is a pretty common occurrence. And again, as evidenced by the fact that ORC has to make accommodations for it, so we, by two-thirds majority, we can, we can move it to permanent improvement. And again, the purpose there is the fact that it's still being used for facilities.
Cool. Are you done with all your stuff? Because I had a couple of things I wanted to add that I told you I was going to save your financial agenda portion.
I believe so.
Couple of things that I've been looking at that I wanted to let the board know. Number one is I'm not going to serve on a finance committee. I've decided to keep engaged as a board member in open board meetings rather than serving committees that are on the record. I, I'm a firm believer that transparency is critically important, especially when you're dealing with finances, and I'm just more comfortable discussing those things publicly. That being said, tracking these changes in legislature, in legislation that dramatically affects school funding has brought into question our funding levels being inadequate and the adjustments that have to be made to stay fiscally viable are significant. I don't, I don't think anyone, myself included, even want to consider what that means. And I have been working over the last month, working with Treasure McManus and Carl Keith's office, and the Miami'sburg Finance Office, and the Township Tax Office to better understand what our options are, to serve as, you know, a fiduciary in this realm and on this board, to bring a suggestion board. And I wanted to do that tonight. There's something that I've been looking at and I've been considering, and I just want to put it in everybody's ear, just so you hear it, you know, let my mind get into your brain and consider it as it will. When you look across the country and across the state, there's a huge push to abolish property taxes completely. And there's a huge push in the state of Ohio to abolish, that has a lot of legs, and is a very organized group doing it, and a lot of people at the state level believe that that will be on the ballot this coming November. That completely destroys the whole coffee list and makes the numbers that we're having here look great. So, what I've been sitting here thinking, because I reached out to constituents, and when I did so, I asked them what they were looking for, looking to see, and a lot of those constituents are my parents' age. They're in their 60s to their mid-80s. They raised their families here, they were raised here themselves, they retired here. And the burden of property taxes has gotten to the point where they're considering leaving, be it for Warren County, Preble County, Dart County, leaving, just to escape the tax burden of living here with their properties. And one of the things that I've been looking at, that I shared with Mr. Wells earlier today, I don't know if I shared it with Stacy or not, but we currently collect 11.62 mills in substitute emergency levy. And because of the way the laws are written, passing another property tax levy really isn't an option. Do I understand that right?
They will, yeah, I mean, there will still be an option to pass fixed amount levies, but again, it's going to be quite restricted versus what had been done historically, at least over the last three years.
Correct. And it would dramatically impact our seniors because it would cause their property taxes to go up, and, and that is some, and so I've been doing a little bit of research into earned income taxes, and I know I've shared this with you a little bit, and how, you know, something as simple as a 1% earned income tax would generate, and I'm just looking at these numbers preliminarily, once I get to real date, I'll certainly share them with you, we can discuss them again in December, but by passing an earned income. But by passing an earned income tax, it could, and I know there's legislation that's on the table right now, to roll back the substitute emergency levy with a 1% earned income tax. And within that is included an RND, so required minimum distributions in Social Security, your IRA, all the retirement benefits are sheltered from that income tax. And we give our seniors a huge break and allow them to breathe. And it would also allow us to capture a lot of revenue in areas that we otherwise could not. Significant revenue. I think, you know, just to give you, for instance, the city of Myamisburg charges 2.5% in income tax, and it generates around $24 million a year for them. That was 2022, so it's probably closer to 2025. So if we did 1% just in that piece alone, that would generate, you know, 13 or 14 million, and all that canceled that alone. So if you add in all the salaries and wages and all the earned income in Miami Township as a part of that, and also give them the same rollback tax relief on the substitute emergency levy, it would allow us to be adequately funded. And I know I suggested this to you earlier today, that I understand a maneuver like that would take a little bit of time. But, you know, it would allow us to, if it's marketed correctly, to come forward even before the legislation to do that, to ask for that in May, with a clear understanding and a marketing strategy with everybody involved, that the rollback effort to, if May was successful, that the substitute emergency levy be rolled back in November. So it's just something that I want everybody to think about. It's detailed, it's complex, but I think it's a viable option for us to consider.
Thank you, Jason. I just want to be clear there that I think there'll be many meetings to come that the board needs to discuss, you know, what options and paths they need to take. I mean, I think this is a viable one. But none of those discussions have started, and they'll take time and collaboration between the board to figure out what's best. So I appreciate that.
Yeah, I mean, the conversation kind of had half-started. And that's why I was trying to do is share with everybody what those conversations are then. So that was it.
Rocco? Mr. Amler?
Yes.
Mr. Dapler?
Yes.
Mrs. Gettler?
Yes.
Mr. Maury?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Next, we have acceptance of donations. And we've got quite a few here. A lot are going to the National Honor Society. It looks like they have been out knocking on doors, so good for them. Quite a bit of money sitting here for them. Some books are going to 3,08690 to Medlarview, 2,0095917 going to Mark Twain. Books going to Bear, 136701. Those are all from PTO or PTA. And then the 100 from Schweitzer's Energy Laboratories, SEL School donation, 200 for St. John's Lutheran Church Ford Community Connection Program. And then all these other ones are for the National Honor Society. 2,000 from the Legion, 3,000 from the Moose, 200 from Submarine House, 250 from Watts Plumbing, 250 from Beck and Phillips Capital Group. So thank you to all those donations. Do I have a motion to approve donations?
Submove.
Second.
First by Mr. Maury, second by Mrs. Gettler. Rocco? Mr. Amler?
Yes.
Mr. Dapler?
Yes.
Mrs. Gettler?
Yes.
Mr. Maury?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes. I just want to make a comment. This just shows how much our community supports our school. And I appreciate all the people who made donations to the National Honor Society, but also to the school libraries. What we must really have very engaging PTO and PTA groups. This is, that's amazing. That's a lot of money. That's a lot of money. Thank you.
Okay, item 10 is the established date and time of the organizational board meeting. It is recommended that the organizational meeting be held on January 15th, 2026 at 5:00 PM. The Myamisburg Board of Education, 5:40 East Park Avenue, Myamisburg, Ohio. Item B, appointment of president pro ten for organization meeting. In order to follow proper procedures, it will be necessary to appoint a president pro ten to proceed over the organizational meeting to be held on January 15th. President pro ten will be Christopher Amler. There is no voting on those. It's just information for the public stating that that's when that organization meeting will come out. There'll still be a normal notice as well.
I have a question. Is that going to include a work session?
Nope.
Or is it just going to be the organizational meeting?
Nope. January 15th, yep. Guys will figure out who's going to be, who, what, and...
At 5 o'clock, and then you have a board meeting at 6.
5 o'clock, and then you get the board meeting at 6.
That one will decide when we're going to have our work sessions and...
You guys will be able to decide whatever you would like in that meeting. You've got an hour to do it. Okay, we are going to move on to reports. Ms. Molly?
I'm at the head.
Say anything, so.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. So last month, you had a meeting very early and CTC had not met. So I have October and November, or September and October. So I'm so sorry, this is going to take just a hot minute. They met on October 21st, and they were talking about the four-year financial report as well. Some key revenue highlights concerned. Real estate was a steady 5% growth per year. Public utilities were projected at 4.8% for '26 and 1% up after that. State funding with a small increase in '26 and no increases after that. And casino revenue, I have to find out more about because it's new and it's being estimated. I don't know where the casino is, so I'll find out more for you. Their expenditures, however, personnel services are increasing in '26, '27. Employee benefits are 4% for '26 and 10% for the remaining forecast. Purchase services are all increasing, and those in cleaning, maintenance, lease, everything's going up, basically. So the concerns are overall, it looks like they're going to be okay until fiscal year 2029. And during the increase in enrollment and the other increases, it's going to get iffy by then. But the staff are looking at ways to save without impacting student education. So I know you guys are talking about these things, and you're not alone. There were several retirements announced and full-time new hires and many part-time hires. Policy 5136 for personal communication devices was reviewed, and it does comply with the new state standards, and that was passed. The cool thing was, they hosted a No One Walks Alone. It was an annual walk, and what it does is raise awareness for organ, eye, tissue, blood, and bone marrow donations. It was sponsored by the school and HOSA and FCC LA. The donations were collected, and there were 15 flatbeds of donations. They had clothing, food, and hygiene products. So I thought, that's pretty impressive for students to come through with that amount of money for these people. So Student News, Skills USA has new senior officers, and among them is Addison McMillan, and she is from Myamisburg, and she represents cosmetology. We have three new ambassadors, Aiden Ratcliffe, Cole Kendall, and Donna Watts. So they are already working with students, and tours I know are going on for November. The November meeting had a presentation by the auto collision class and Mr. Sadler, who is the teacher. And what they do is now all cars are plastic, you go and you can, you know, it's cheaper to repaint it if you can than to unclip it and get a new one. So they have fine-tuned this, and they can blend any old paint with new paint. It's pretty cool to watch these kids do this. I'm like, can I give you my car if I need some help? There's some things. So we had also retirements again and some new hires. But there were several cool activities that the school is doing. It's not your typical school thing. Veterinary Science juniors had a dog show, and they showed different breeds and what they can do, and what their skills are, and what, you know, their characteristics are. And then the Veterinary Science seniors had a horse show. So that was very impressive as well. And the FCC LA, they're a busy group. And that means Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America had a training camp, and this was the first camp of the year for them. And also, there was a new Career Champions Academy, and that was attended by a lot of people in the region. In our satellite classes at Myamisburg, they're doing some really cool things. The design and modeling classes are exploring engineering by creating ankle fort or throttle, I don't know what this is, but it sounds like they're helping somebody. Sketching and measurements and air skimmers. Again, I don't know. I'm going to have to go see these kids. I'm like, what is that?
An air skimmer?
Yeah, what's an air skimmer? It sounds cool. They're doing 3D printing, and they're also doing measurements and building through labels. So Career Connection is traveling, they traveled to Youngsteri to learn the production of ice cream and cheese, and they've got some samples, so that was good. And the STEM class is studying gear ratios and chain drives on VEX built race cars. So they're all moving and grooving. There were fifth-day tours from Kinder. And I just wanted to add on a personal note, I attended the 2025 OSBA conference in Columbus from the 15th to the 17th and learned so much to help better serve Miami Valley CTC. But I got to see these guys. They did a presentation for students on the board, and they spoke so eloquently. And I would say most of the people in the room who didn't have students on the board will have students on the board because there was three other schools that got up and spoke with these guys and did just a bang-up job. They were, you guys were amazing. So thank you for representing us so well. You did a great job. And I have our state report card and all five stores. So we are, they're just doing a great job out there and taking care of our students. So thank you. Any questions?
Nope.
Okay.
And you'll tell us next month what an air skimmer is.
I'm going to find out. I want to eat one.
Next, we got Legislative Lazon.
Lazon. Chase America. Mr. Wells kind of covered almost everything. Well, not everything. The State House has been incredibly busy. But because we diverted the legislation during finance, I'm going to divert back to finance just for about 30 seconds or so, maybe a minute, of some areas that I forgot to cover there that, I don't know, I kind of got it backwards. So we talked a little bit about a program of the mid-teens that we had discussed on Campus Quest. And I just want to understand a few details surrounding that $4.5 million stadium build. I know we raised 2.2 million, and you told me that a loan was gotten for the balance of that project, and that it still had a $3.3 million balance. Are those loan documents available that we can look at? Just look at the record to understand the history of how all that's flowed?
Yeah, certainly. It's actually a, technically, it's a certificate of participation lease. Again, I'm not trying to parse words, it's just, but it's a, you issue bonds, and investors buy those bonds, and ultimately, that's how that was financed. So yes, I mean, I'm sure we can find the paperwork. It had to be board-approved in order to go into debt at the times.
If you want my financial, I would just like to look at it and understand all the details surrounding it because, I mean, everybody has a story, but I kind of trust what I see rather than what I hear these days. So I would just rather read it and better understand it in the next month or two as we move forward. That's all I have.
Thank you. Next, we have the Drug Free, Montgomery County Drug Free Coalition Liaison. Ms. Neese?
Well, Ms. Neese did not attend the meeting today. It was live, and I had to, you know, work, you know, I had to make some money. And I, so I asked Ms. Neese to go in my place. So Ms. Neese attended the live meeting today.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll try to make this short, but we did meet in person. And Tia Moreta, the interim director of the Ohio Department of Behavioral Health, spoke about the whole person's, about whole person's health, and the department moved to help Ohioans become healthy. And she spoke of several initiatives. The opioid treatment program, where they have mobile medication units launched in seven different counties. Peer services to help reduce the stigma of mental health. I like this one, this was crisis support. A mobile response and stabilization services for kids 20 and younger. They call 988, and a team is deployed in 60 minutes. And then treatment is provided at no cost. And the goal is to keep children in their homes and their community. And then there's resiliency component. I thought our student board reps might be interested in this. But it focuses on youth-led work by asking students what they want to solve in their community. And there's 12 youth-led preventative teams in Montgomery County through the ADAMIS Board, which is the Montgomery County Alcohol, Drug, Addiction, and Mental Health Board. I thought this was interesting. The sheriff talked about this. There's a real problem with gambling. And there's a partnership with the Ohio High School Athletic Association. There's the, the OHSAA has a campaign against gambling. The concerns are casino spots, sport, gambling, fantasy sports. The sheriff just said he's quite concerned about this and how quickly it has come about. And there's a hotline for problem gambling, 1-800-589-9966. And then there's continued conversation about a behavioral hospital in our region. Most big cities have a behavioral hospital, and our community members have no place to go for mental health care except a regular hospital, which may not be equipped to serve them. So that was the report.
Thank you, Ms. Neese. I skipped Mr. Amler. He's got, he's going to read the remaining student of the months from all the other ones.
From Bauer Primary School, we have Lakin Blas. Bear Primary School, we have Lily Sheffield. Jane Chance Intermediate School, Julia Karong Bong. Kinder Intermediate School, Blaine Bush. Mark Twain Primary School, Colin Berger. Medlarview Primary School, we have Finney Mangan. Mount Intermediate School, we have Mer Zaya. Myamisburg Middle School, we have Eli Cressigs. And from Myamisburg High School, we have Avery Thomas. So congratulations to the Students of the Month, and Mr. Damian Anderson from Maddox Lane Preschool. Congratulations to all of them.
Thank you. That leaves me with district news, and I'm going to give the shout-out here to the student board reps. Our student board reps presented at the OSBA Capital Conference on Monday, where they highlighted the student representative program developed with neighboring districts to amplify student voices. They explained how the initiative helps bridge communication gaps between students, board members, and legislators. Additionally, our students shared insight with our Ohio districts on the positive impact of having student representatives on the board and offered guidance on how to establish a similar program in our own communities. Thank you, guys, for going up there. That's a, that's a big deal. Lots of people up there get in rooms that are filled and takes lots, lots of courage to stand up in front of people like that. So thank you, guys, for going out there and speaking about this. And you guys do a great job, and it's good, it'd be good for other communities to do as well. So, thank you.
Well, I can say this. All of us that went was in that room. And I've said this before. We have learned just as much from you guys as you have learned from us. I don't think there was anybody in that room that couldn't have been any more prouder of all of you individuals. I think you all did an outstanding job. Every one of you. And it was kind of, when you first got on here, you guys didn't really say much. But to see you guys go up there continuously, one one after another... But to see you guys go up there continuously, one one after another, to add your personal experience and what you guys have done. I think that you guys could take this on the road. There's probably six or eight of you that could take this throughout the state of Ohio. And there probably wouldn't be a superintendent in the state that says, no, this isn't a good idea. You couldn't have made us more proud than what you guys did. And I'm, I know you haven't been here long enough. But you did exceptional as well. And it just goes to show the impact of what you do for our students. And I liked how you guys all talked about going back to the elementary schools and bringing other students along and having a voice for them as well as lending a hand to them when they need it. So I couldn't be any more prouder of you guys. And you guys all did a fantastic job. So I'm sure everybody else will say something as well. But I just wanted to tell you that you guys did us proud. And I was happy for all of you. So thank you. Okay, off to the roundtable. Ms. Williams?
Congratulations to Damian. It's great to see these preschoolers really living and thriving and growing so that they become better students when they hit kindergarten. And they're probably already smarter than, you know, a lot of the kids that don't get that opportunity. So it's great to see him do so well. He was adorable. And again, thank you to all of you. And thank you to our PPOs and PPAs. That's very impressive. Thank you, guys, for probably all involved with the Honor Society going around. Do you have any, I don't think so.
It's overrated, right?
Yeah. So it's, we just have an impressive student body. And thank you all. We hope to work as hard as you do.
I forgot to give you your microphone. I'm sorry. You did good. I really don't have anything.
I would just like to congratulate Jason Osborne on his retirement. I'm so appreciative of his years of service and his leadership in our district. And then I'd like to congratulate Damian. Oh my, showing that leadership. He's in preschool. So that, that's amazing. This week, it was my pleasure as well to join Ms. Maney, Mr. Wells, Ms. House, Ms. Nice, Mr. Amsler and future board member Ms. Nunnery at the Ohio School Board Association Annual State Meeting in Columbus. So many informative presentations were shared related to the Ohio Public Schools. But the highlight for me was, as has been already mentioned, was the presentation given by our student board reps. Andrew, Sophia and Addie joining other regional student board reps. The session was educating other districts on the benefits of having students serve as student board reps on their local school board. The presentation was received so favorably by the audience. I look forward to the future endeavors of our student board reps. And Mrs. Nice and I are ready for the roadshow.
Well, you all, you know that I think you're amazing. And I have absolutely loved working with you, even at 10 o'clock on Saturday morning. But I just wanna, from a different perspective, I just wanted to thank the staff in our district for all that you've poured into these students. It's one of the reasons that they're so amazing. And I just wanted to say that. Because everyone else has said everything else about how great you all are. And I mean, it just, to me, it just shows that our district is doing a lot of great things. And I'm just a very positive person. And I look for the positives and I see a lot. I did want to say too, that I'm really excited about our wheelchair basketball team. And that's all.
Well, I thank our reps. Again, I think you guys did a fantastic job. So congratulations. Also, as being a recent retiree, I think anytime you go out on your own terms, as Jason Osborne is doing here tomorrow, I want to congratulate him. I know our athletic department puts in a lot, a lot of hours onsite, scheduling. And even though we're losing a good individual in Jason Osborne, and he is retiring, I know our athletic department is still in good hands with Jason Chade. So that, I like that aspect of we're not gonna miss a beat in our athletic department. But I wanted to say congratulations to Jason. And his family is getting to have some additions to their family here pretty soon. So congratulations to them. And I will finally say Happy Thanksgiving. I hope everybody has a safe holiday over the next couple of weeks. And that'll be it. And I'll pass it on to, pass it on to you.
Thank you. I'd like to congratulate, actually, we approved the early graduates. And I don't want that lost in the room on what an accomplishment that is for students to graduate early. So congratulations at meeting those requirements. Our student board reps, absolutely, would love to mimic what you've already heard. But what a great representation of Miami'sburg Schools you did. And so grateful to have you joining us and representing the district, amongst other districts and at the state level. So great work. The Saturday, December 6th, I'd like to give a little call out. It is the Miami'sburg Rotary Club's Pancake Day at Miami'sburg High School. It's from 7:00 AM to noon. Tickets are $6. Children number 48 free. It's a great annual event. It's the 65th annual. So as a new member of the Rotary locally, I just wanted to share that information with the community as well. This coming week, we have our Career Expedition Day. I wanted to thank Mrs. Moore about, for that work. Seventh grade students will enjoy an entire day of career expedition, which is an amazing time to explore career options and see the great opportunities that students have for our seventh graders. And let's see. I wanted to congratulate Mr. Dapler on completing his term and being an excellent president and leading us through the last year. Mr. Amsler, congratulations on your reelection. Ms. Nice and Ms. Gettner, thank you for advising our student board reps. Without your guidance and leadership, they probably wouldn't be nearly as informed and prepared as they are. So thank you. And Mr. Maury, I wanted to thank you for connecting myself and also Ms. Lucas with the Ohio Adaptive Sports that led to the creation of our wheelchair basketball team. So thank you for that. And then finally, I just wanted to say Happy Thanksgiving to everybody in Miami'sburg Schools community. And I hope you get some time to rest and enjoy your time. And maybe we all should channel a little student of the month, Damian, and ask our friends and family to dance a little more often. So I encourage you to ask someone to dance over the Thanksgiving break.
You guys reminded me of something that I forgot about, the wheelchair basketball program. I definitely want to thank Chuck, Chuck and Kim Carter for helping get that off the ground. It's not an easy task. There's a lot of work there. There's something that I wanted to announce to the community that I forgot about. On Friday, December 5th, the Centerville High School, there is a wheelchair basketball game. It's between Centerville and Beaver Creek. But it starts at 6:30 PM at Centerville High School. And it's really cool. I'm looking forward to going. So if you want to go to a basketball game the day before you go eat pancakes, that opportunity exists. So that's all I got.
Thank you. I'm gonna keep it short. I'm gonna say Happy Thanksgiving. I think it's football and food, great time to be with family. I bet a lot enjoys that. It's been a while since I've just thanked staff, all staff, and just want to say thank you, guys, for all the hard work that everybody does. Unless Ms. Maney doesn't make me come back. I do have one more meeting, you know, next, next month. But I also want to congratulate Chris and Anne for getting reelected and then Shelby for getting elected. And I don't think people understand the time and effort that goes into this. It's definitely more than one board meeting a month, which was how it was sold to me. So that is not really the case. So there's a lot of time and effort that goes into sitting up here. So congrats and good luck. That's what I have. Mr. Wells?
I just, you know, I know everybody has talked a lot about our student reps. And being new to the district, we didn't have student reps at our last district. And so when I walked into this, I kind of wondered what, what's this about? And I have to tell you, you guys impressed the dickens out of me. Really, you and the other student reps. And it's one thing to stand up and do prepared comments. It's another thing altogether to field questions from the audience. Because you don't know what's coming at you. And it's really easy to be 16, 17, 15, whatever, and to just say, you go. No, 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 you go up, you go up. And it was so impressive to me to watch. You guys didn't hesitate. You were like fighting each other to go up and answer questions. And I think that was so impressive. And, and, and I just, I, I, you know, again, we roll the film and everybody out there in TV land and the folks in the audience. I just want you to know, we have got so much to be proud of. You guys are super impressive. And I, I want to make sure that you get a good polished resume. Because whenever you're done with education and you're ready to hit the working world, come see me. There's a spot for you on the treasurer's office staff. Thank you.
I don't know. I truly had the best time in Columbus on Monday. Sophia and I actually ended up going to school that morning. And the teachers had wished us good luck on our presentation, which instilled with, in us some confidence for that day. But nevertheless, I was a little nervous. But getting up there and for some reason, standing in front of that big group of people and kind of expressing my passion for the vitality of student voice and engagement. I kind of just, I just talked and it went truly amazing. I got to talk about our district impacts. Sophia and Addie, they talked about different subjects. Mine was our district impact. I got to explain our projects that we've done within the middle schools, elementary schools and the high school. It was truly amazing. We got to network. I talked to a few superintendents and other board members after the presentation. And funny enough, we rode down with Wes Carrollton in a van for an hour and a half. So three hours total. They were wonderful. So we got to kind of form those relationships, closer relationships with those from us Carrollton. So that was truly amazing. That was an amazing experience. And it kind of allowed me to get a glimpse of some of the bigger stuff that I can do if I put my mind to it. And switching gears though, NHS, we did like door-to-door sales a few weeks ago. Myself and a few other members, we.
The shows.
Yeah. We hit downtown and we hit most shops on Main Street. It was about two hours of work. I am the treasurer for the chapter, so I've seen all the checks and the money come through. And it's just truly a wonderful community, community come together to provide us that money. We actually get to go for free now. We were worried. It was about $1,000 at first. But it's free for all of us to go. So that's a wonderful thing that we're super excited for.
Where are you going?
We're going to the National Conference in Washington DC. So it's a three-day seminar with keynote speakers and service projects. And a little bit of free time for us to go hit the city, see the monuments, go to the Smithsonian's. We're flying too, which is really neat. But yeah, it's, this week and this past few months have been truly amazing. Despite the senioritis on me.
Hello. First of all, I just want to give you guys an update about how state went. So I made cross-country, the state championships unexpectedly. I was not expecting to make it at all. But ran good at regionals and it was just an amazing trip. I ran pretty good. I got my third best time of the season. But it was just amazing to be there with my coach and my two teammates that have supported me throughout the season. Just an amazing way to end my cross-country career. And I want to thank you guys for coming to my clapout and just supporting me through that. Secondly, I am a part of an organization called the Montgomery County Student Advisory Delegation. McSat for short. So essentially, what it is, is we are student representatives for Montgomery County. There's two students per district. And every single school has, is represented at this place. It takes place in the Educational Service Center for Montgomery County. Superintendent Shannon Cox runs it. I'm sure everyone's kind of met with her before. But it's just an amazing opportunity to give them feedback about what we think the county needs and what, just what we, they could do for us to help support us. And this recent meeting I had in November talked about being ready for careers and what it looks like for a Montgomery County student to be ready to go to the career field. And they highlighted a program called Preschool Promises, which was very interesting. It talked about how it's essential to start building those skills early on, as early as you can, from ages three to four, all the way through like seniors and high school. And this program just helps families in preschool, helps with cost, helps just build relationships with preschool teachers and just programs in general to help students get into preschool, which is essential for kindergarten and elementary development. So I just wanted to shout out that program. I think it's really interesting. And I encourage everyone to go look it up and do some research on that. Secondly, ditto to everything Andrew said about the OSBA Conference. It was amazing. Just a great opportunity to share my passion I have for student board representation. And I discussed kind of my process I went through to becoming a board rep and the application I pulled out, which was amazing to share with everyone. And I want to thank everyone for showing up to support us. And then last thing is NHS. So as Andrew mentioned, he's the treasurer. I am the president of NHS. And our DC trip, we are so excited to go on that. It's gonna be amazing. We just want to thank you for all the donations that we have come across. It was amazing to see all the support from our community. So, and I hope everyone has a happy Thanksgiving.
Well, I don't mean to sound like a broker here, but I'm probably gonna echo everything that some of these people have said. I wanted to first and foremost touch on like what Ms. Nice said. All the staff and just everybody who came out to support us. I wanted to say thank you. It definitely is scary getting up there. I do get a bit of case of like jelly legs when I get up behind the podium. But it really is just such a blessing. It's such like a great opportunity to be surrounded by people who are willing to extend a hand and support us and take a chance on us. And it really is, I talked about what it's like to be new. Because I don't have much experience in this leadership position yet. But it has been very rewarding so far, even just this opportunity to go and present in front of so many people and like be able to spread such a beautiful thing. That's very helpful to our school district as a whole. And being new has definitely taught me that I have a lot to fill in for these people who definitely don't sleep at night, as you said. I'm convinced they're just like robots running on batteries because I don't know how they do it. But I just, I really did want to say thank you because so many of you came out to support. And I know Ms. Maney knew as well. And so you definitely kind of got thrown up there as well. But it really does mean a lot. I do have a lot of like big shoes to fill. But I am very passionate about this position. And I'm very excited to have been given the opportunity to be here. And so I will always like put my best foot forward and just be the best voice for the student body that I can be. So I wanted to say thank you for that. And also, I am very ready and excited for Thanksgiving. And I hope all of you guys have a happy Thanksgiving as well. And I've got this belt on now, but probably won't fit on a Thanksgiving day. So, thank you, guys.
Thanks, everybody. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
What's up, bud?
Second.
First by, oh, do you, hey, do you guys want to talk?
I will say, Molly did forget to give a shout out to one of the satellite programs at the middle school.
Which one?
Our media. We have a teacher who in our satellite program, Media, that does our daily announcements.
Is it really?
She might have, might have not mentioned it since it's her daughter that teaches it. Fabulous job, but.
I'm trying to get these guys onto interview. So they can motivate the eighth graders to apply.
Yes, great idea.
What do you?
I'm just making sure we're good. Rocco?
Mr. Amsler? Yes.
Mr. Dapler?
Yes.
Mrs. Gettner?
Yes.
Mr. Maury?
Yes.
Mrs. Nice?
Yes.
Adjournment at 7:49 PM.